Here.
Member Hall?
Here.
Member Hassan Adka?
Here.
Member Carter is here. Vice President Exum here. And President Pelosi.
Here. Are there any additions, corrections, or modifications to tonight's agenda? Are there any assistance statements tonight? All right. And there is no call for an executive session after tonight's meeting, so it's time for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So.
Roll call, please. No, sorry. No, sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. First action item tonight is 7.1, the appointment of a new sub-district seven board member. Is there a motion to appoint Dr. Brian Ogolsky to fill the vacant sub-district seven seat?
I move. I move. Do I need to read out the statement, the motion?
No, just.
I'd like to move to approve, Mr. Ogolsky.
I'll second that.
Not sure if this needs to be a roll call or not, but let's just do it anyway. Roll call, please.
Yes. Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Hassan Adka?
Yes.
Member Carter votes yes. Vice President Exum, yes. And President Pelosi.
Yes, welcome.
Welcome.
Now it's time for you to take the oath of office. So my first time doing this myself, so please. Please, please stand up.
Yes.
I
I, Brian Ogolsky.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education of Urbana School District 116.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education of Urbana School District 116.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
I further affirm that.
I further affirm that.
I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my full board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district.
As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district.
I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Urbana School District 116.
I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Urbana School District number 116.
I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework.
I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework.
I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law.
I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law.
I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community's school or schools to advance the vision for Urbana School District number 116.
I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community's schools or school or schools to advance the vision for Urbana School District number 116.
And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
Congratulations and welcome. Our first item tonight is administrative report on Thomas Paine Elementary School renovation.
Okay, we'll invite Scott, Scott Walker from IGW up.
Good evening. We are working on the Thomas Paine addition and remodeling project. And we've worked through the first two phases of our design process. We went through schematic design and design development. If you remember, I was here a few months ago to talk about schematic design and we received approval on that. This is just an update of where we are at the design development phase. And we have, we're currently working through our third design phase, which is construction documents. That's where we kind of put all the details down on paper for the contractors so that they can bid it and price it and then actually construct the building. So. That's where we are today. So here's a view of the site. To the left on this drawing is Florida Avenue, just to give you a little perspective. The lighter green color is the existing building. And the blue is the two additions to the existing building. We have an addition to the north. And then one to the east, which includes fine arts classrooms, a new gym, and some other support spaces. And kind of based on some of our concerns about the economy and how construction prices are increasing, we've developed quite a few alternates in this project, seven of them. And that just gives us the ability, once we get the bids, to kind of adjust our project budget and so that we have the funds available to actually perform a project. So this is a base bid drawing on the site. There we go, sorry. So that's base bid. See, we've got, we have to reconstruct part of the entry just because of the grades and media ADA requirements. The turnaround and staff parking here is existing. And there's an existing loop for parent drop off of students in the morning. So that's base bid. And then if I flip over to the alternate bid, the addition gets a little bit larger and we add one kindergarten classroom and one first grade classroom. The base bid, we have three of each grade level. And then in the alternate bid, we add a fourth kindergarten and first grade. I think that's primarily because those are typically a little smaller classes, so they fill up quicker than the other grades. And then also on this base bid, we leave the existing parking down here. That's existing parking. And under the alternate, we redevelop parking across here. And then a little bit of overflow down in this area. In both schemes, we develop a new service drive. Right now, the service drive, they come across and they cross the path from the K-12 classrooms to the playground. So it's not a very safe environment. So we're trying to improve that here. And then we're also, the K-12 playground is sorry, is being fenced in just to provide a little more control so we don't have kids running out into Florida Avenue. Jumping over to the floor plan, again, the blue is the new addition. This is base bid. You see, we have three first grade, three kindergarten. We flip over to the alternate bid. We have four kindergarten and four first grade. And it adds about 2,000, a little over 2,000 square feet to the building to get that extra kindergarten and first grade classroom. Just a couple other. So part of the main focus of our addition is a gymnasium with a new stage. So then the existing cafeteria gym can be just a multipurpose cafeteria primarily with the existing kitchen off of that space. We're also adding fine art classrooms, music, dance, drama, art. And then expanding again classroom space within the building. We are touching basically the entire building, so it'll be all new mechanical systems, new roof over the whole building. So a lot of work involved in the project. Part of the new codes require us to have a storm shelter. We're using that fine arts area for that. We got a music classroom, drama, art, and makerspace. And that's all protected 250 mile per hour winds from a tornado and it'll still stand there and you know, protect the kids in that environment. And that's enough to fit the anticipated occupancy of the building, students and teachers. Just a few images of the exterior of the building. This is looking from the northwest. Got the addition here. You can see as I move to the alternate bid, it gets a little longer. This is a view kind of from the opposite direction from the east, northeast. There's the new gym sticking up above and the stage and then fine arts area there. And then again, that wing gets a little longer under the alternate bid. So a view from the, from the west. And again, that wing gets a little longer. The main entry of the building. Not changed too much. We're going to add some, a little more prominent signage to the building. And part of the concept of a exterior is to kind of wrap the whole building and make it look like one building rather than a building with a series of additions. This is from the, from the east. Again, there's the the gym with some high windows into it. And this is the 355 playground to the right. This is looking from the northeast. That's the service drive coming in. Some, some associated parking there and a back entrance there that would get you to the kitchen. So kind of jumping over to costs, this was set up to be similar to what you saw at schematic design. And I think kind of key point in red is total there is about 15.6 million. Previous estimate for the project. We've since pulled out several alternates. So the base bid alternate is about 11.4, 11.5. And then we have an alternate to add the two classrooms, which is about $380,000. And then we pulled out some alternates for windows and door replacement of the existing building. We've tried to identify alternates that, for items that we can come back and do later. You know, if we have to reduce this based on what kind of bids we get, we do have about $900,000 in contingency, which we want to hold on to for any unforeseen during construction. But if we get toward the end of construction and we haven't used that, we can use that to pick up some of these alternates. We've done that on some other schools like Yankee Ridge. We came back and did some more finished work inside the building that we weren't able to afford originally, so. And so alternates four and five are some, just some finished work in the existing classrooms. They're really not too bad. The floors are in decent shape and, you know, they could use a fresh coat of paint, but it's not too bad. So that's those two alternates. And then alternate six is some parking on the west side of the building. And seven is for a waxless floor in the classrooms as opposed to a waxable VCT.
Is the maintenance cost much different on that, on that flooring?
Yeah, it's, it's less. You know, I don't know if it maybe lasts as long, so there's some trade off there that you might have to replace it after, if it gets heavy wear, but but yeah, generally then you're not in there every summer trying to put, you know, four or five coats of wax on the floor, so. I think early childhood has that waxless product in the classrooms. So a construction estimate is about 13.7. We've got a couple million in owner's cost, which includes some of the network and security cameras and some items like that. To get us to a total, current total estimate is at 15.8. So that's up a couple hundred thousand from schematic design. Working with our consultants now to see if we can get that back down. But we do have these alternates identified, which can help adjust that when we actually take the bids.
And Scott, I know the board is aware, but just so the public is aware, we included the geothermal.
Yes, correct. I'm sorry, that, that 15.6 from SD, that included the geothermal system, which was about a little under $400,000.
Another question I have is since we're using some Esser funds to help pay for this, wasn't that contingent on expanding the footprint of the building? So wouldn't alternate one kind of be covered by Esser funds?
Yeah, that was part of the, yeah.
So I mean, I think we'd have to take alternate one just for that, right?
Yeah, it is part of Esser two right now.
Yeah.
Yes, it is. Yeah, it's been approved as, as part of Esser two, so.
Okay, yeah, we, we might consider not making it an alternate then really, yeah. So yeah, we can look at that. We've also looked under the geothermal, there are some energy grants available. So we're looking at that. I think it's about $60,000. So that'll help offset some of that cost as well.
Sorry, board, any questions?
Sorry. Yeah, the last item was that if there's no other questions, I can just quickly read the schedule. So we completed the design development phase. Construction documents are scheduled to be complete toward the end of October. And then we would issue that for bid for about a month. And then we would come back to you December 7th for approval of the bids. And then the actual construction, it covers two summers and one full school year. So it's a fairly long construction process just because of the way we have to phase it to keep the kids in the building, keep the school functional, so. So we'll actually start in spring, do some of the utility and site work that we can get done while school starts. And then that first summer, we'll do some remodeling in the building. And then during the school year, we'll work primarily on the additions and then come back that final summer and finish up remodeling. So it makes for a little longer project, but allows us to keep the kids in the school, keep it functional.
I just had a follow up question. I believe the, the last time we spoke, there was just some conversation regarding courtyard usage and outdoor classroom space and just preparing for future needs. Just knowing what we know going through COVID. So it did seem like there was an existing courtyard. So I guess my question is more about, maybe it's already embedded in, in here and maybe some of the wayfinding or how educators and, you know, can utilize a space or how that's demarcated. So it's known that that is an, an active learning space is not just, you know. I'm sure it's going to look beautiful, but I'm just kind of curious if that's built in there.
Yeah, no, that's a good, that's a good question. We are moving, there's a, right now, there's a sensory garden within the courtyard. And that's being moved out to the south of the building in this area. And we're actually paving a portion of the existing courtyard. So yeah, it'd be very easy to use that as a classroom space. There's two sets of double doors that exit out onto that space. So yeah, I think it'd be very functional for an outdoor classroom.
Go ahead, Brendan.
I just had a question about, I noticed we're building all the way out the K-2 area and the restroom. There's no additional restroom. And so I'm just wondering what, you know, what's going on with that piece?
We've they have a fairly large K-2 restroom right here. So I think it's, it actually supports that pretty well. And then for 35, this is kind of serving the 3-4 wing. And then this fifth grade wing, we've added classrooms for that. So I think it segregates out pretty well, actually. And we do have some single use restrooms that we've added as well, as well as some special ed. They have a classroom or a toilet, single use toilet that also has a shower within it, so. And that, the building as it exists actually has significantly more restrooms than would be required by the plumbing code, but but when you have a whole class going to the restroom at one time, you need that, so.
Maybe for anyone else have any questions? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
8.2 is our six day student enrollment report. Dr. Horton?
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm going to give an update on our current enrollment. And these numbers are reflective of students that have registered and have been in attendance. So overall, when you look at our district total, you'll see we're right at 4,000. And previously last year, we were at 3,830. 2019, we were at 4,199 at six day enrollment. So not quite where we were pre-pandemic, but we are continuing to register students every day. When you look at each individual school, you will see that our enrollment is up for last year except Dr. Williams, which that is intentional as we were really keeping a close eye on those numbers so that we didn't get past 450. So we had students that were, are going to Thomas Paine or Yankee Ridge when enrollment was looking like it was at 470 at one point. And the majority of the students from overflow are going to Yankee Ridge because their class sizes were much smaller. So we really took that into account. And Yankee Ridge's class sizes were around 13, 14 before we'd add any students from Dr. Williams. If we look at early childhood, right underneath that bar graph, you'll see that we're at 258 now compared to 195 last year and 281 the year prior. And then below that are two classes at King. We're at a total of 21 right now compared to 15 last year and 24 the year before. So I expect enrollment to increase because we, we are getting additional students each and every day. Any questions?
I know you did some, the moving, you just described, how are the class sizes for the various elementary schools especially? Are they?
You'll see some, some variance. At kindergarten, at Dr. Williams, I don't have all the, all the numbers right in front of me. They're right around 20, 21. Where we have some classes across our elementary, as I mentioned, that are at 14, you know, so really keeping a close eye on that. And of course, our social distance in all of our classrooms, kindergarten classrooms that I've been into still have space for kidney shaped tables, rugs, where we've seen the classrooms that have created more space are intermediate classrooms for fifth grade. And they may have removed some of those alternative reading areas, the tables, just to maximize space for students. So we do have a couple of fifth grade classrooms across the district that are right at 25, 26, but we still have that adequate space. We personally looked at that to make sure.
Thank you.
And I was going to add to, we do have a couple of class size adjustment TA positions posted. And we continue to kind of, Kim watches those numbers very carefully and works directly with the principals. So if we need to, we, we kind of look at that within the first 30 days, but we posted a couple that we were just kind of monitoring. And if we need to hire those people after the first 30 days, then we'll do that. Yep.
Do we have any mixed grade level classes, like K-1, 2, 3, any of those?
No, we do not. So as we know, and when we look at the research with John Hattie and effect size, you know, we, we, it doesn't have a high effect size when we have combined classes. So over the last couple of years, we have dissolved those.
Okay. What do you think the drop is at Yankee Ridge? The attendance, do you think just due to COVID or?
Yeah, they had, you know, I'll have to look at that further. Classes weren't busting at the seams last year either. Partially. I think that we're still seeing the impact of that a bit. That's why our numbers aren't quite what they were pre-pandemic. And we're still having a lot of late enrollments. We have very little. I think we're up to about 19 for students that are medically exempt for homebound. So you know, we're not seeing a lot with that either.
All right, thank you.
And Kim, I was going to add, to Brenda's point, Yankee Ridge was the last building that had those combination classrooms. I think last year, did they have a 2, 3, and a 3, 4?
Oh, they did still have splits last year, yeah.
So as we kind of separated those, it created an extra second grade and an extra fourth grade, I want to say, which is a good thing for social distancing, but it also meant that the class sizes across those grade levels can be a little lower because we got rid of those, a couple of those combinations.
Any further questions? All right, thank you. 9.1, this is our annual hearing on the fiscal year budget. So I will open the public hearing for our is there anybody wishes to make a comment on budget? There are none, I'll close the hearing. And now we're doing the same thing for our adult education budget, opening hearing for the fiscal year 22 education budget. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on that matter? Closing the hearing. Thank you. We do have an action item for administrative personnel items that was in our packet. Ten point one, is there a motion to approve that?
So move.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Orr?
Yes.
Member Agalski?
Yes.
Member Hassan Adka?
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Carter votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Pulaski?
Yes. Moving on to our study topics. The first one is our budget discussion for the year. Carol Baker.
Good evening, everyone. Can everybody hear me okay with the mask on? I wanted, happy to present the FY22 budget to the board tonight. We did have our public hearing as we just finished and that's required on the school code to have the public hearing. And we're also required to have our budget on display for 60 days prior to that. And our tentative budget that the board approved back in June has been on display. So that's considered meeting all the requirements for approval of the budget. I'll be back on the 21st for final approval of the budget. I kind of wanted to go over tonight along with the public hearing, just to present a few things. In your packets, you had the budget assumptions and all the detail of the revenues and expenses for the year, as well as a budget summary. I'll go over just a few of the budget assumptions. I went over these back on the tentative budget in June, but just cover some of the things that have changed since then. On budget assumptions, number three, we finally did get the evidence based funding tier money, about 293,000 additional funds in tier money for FY22. Going the opposite way, they, we finally did finish our negotiations with the U of I. And they did agree to only half of what we have received in the past. So we're giving 50,000 annually for U of I agreement, and they extended that for one additional year. So we will continue to try to get that raised up again, but this year they did reduce that. Onto number six on the budget assumptions. The other, the other area that increased, if you recall, last year during COVID, when I did this budget, we were very conservative in all of our revenues. We dropped corporate replacement tax, a lot of other revenues down, but this year I'm moving those back up to normal. We're expecting our replacement tax to be back to pre pandemic levels. So you'll see a large increase in replacement tax revenue that I'll go over in a little bit too. On number nine, the FY20 budget, we did begin funding the SROs for the middle school and high school. And this budget includes an amount for that as well this year. And it's the agreement that expires in next June of 22. It's number 13. I wanted to point out that we've included a lot of COVID costs in the budget in the past, but now we're hoping that ESER grants will pick up the majority of those COVID costs. I am also applying for FEMA reimbursement for as much as possible. We've not had much luck with that yet, but we're continuing to send applications in and hopeful that costs later on during the year, particularly after January of 21 should be reimbursed. So we're still hoping to get some funds reimbursed from FEMA. Number 14 is probably the biggest change in the budget from prior years and an area that we're continually working on as we just, I think we just completed and submitted the application for ESER three today. So last week we were still moving things around, making decisions on where things would come from. And right now, number 14 is what explains some of the larger items that we have taken from the Ed Fund or that would have been funded by the Ed Fund had we not had ESER funds. The TAOP grant overage that is covered by adult ed's grant up to a certain amount. The district picks up that extra and we're taking that out of ESER in the amount of about 350,000. Clinical professionals that were previously funded by the district. And then we've also hired some additional clinical professionals will be coming from ESER. The school nurses. Previously, we had maybe four or five school nurses. Now we have one at every elementary building and the middle school and high school. So, and in our district nurse, all of that is coming from ESER this year. Network hardware techs. In the past, some of those have come from the district as well as title grants. And then we've also included all of that into ESER in the amount of about $722,000. And then CNI instructional materials of about 110,000, since we do have the ESER funds. We took that out of the debt Ed Fund budget this year because that is going to be funded by ESER as well. So as you can see, there's quite a bit of money that we are saving in the district budget. Not only for, mostly for one time costs that we're having because of ESER and things that we're adding because we want to make sure that our kids are safe and that we have nurses and and clinical professionals in the building. But we also want to make sure that those things that we have funding for them after COVID is over and the ESER funds are all gone. So we'll be talking more about that in a little bit too. But definitely helps out our Ed Fund budget and you'll see the numbers have really gone up as far as total expenditures for the district because of those grant funds. Moving on now to number 21, just wanted to point out, because the board's always interested in the indoor aquatic center loss, that was 180,000, almost 181 this year, which is down a little bit. We're usually about $200,000 loss for the indoor aquatic center. For new board members, what that is, is we fund as a district, half of the operating costs of the, of the pool. And the pool is not a money-making venture by any means. We've lost about every year we've been in, in operations for the pool. This year, the loss is down a bit just because we were closed, shut down during COVID. So the expenses, expenses were less during the shutdown. So that's why the loss is a little bit less this year. Number 23, the transportation fund. Also, we're not seeing, we're seeing a bit of an increase in expenses because last year, as you know, we continued to pay for a student 80% of our cost to try to keep our drivers so that they would still continue to be paid. But because those costs were down last year, our reimbursement that we get based on that this year is going to be down because we're always a year behind. So our claim last year was down. So the money they're reimbursing was for this year. It's going to be down. So you'll see a little bit of a deficit when I go over those numbers in a bit, in the transportation fund. As far as the construction that IGW just spoke about, the life safety fund is, includes completion of an amendment for the Thomas Paine roofing. So part of the Thomas Paine project will be paid for by life safety for the roofing work. And then on number 25, I delineate all the different areas of funding for that project that is included in the budget. Including SR two and three, whether we've written for the gymnasium, a couple of classrooms, fine arts classrooms. So those are in the application that we just submitted. So hopefully that will get approved. And we'll be able to fund portions of the Thomas Paine renovation with the ESER funds as well. And then finally, I just wanted to point out, the TORT fund includes all of our insurance costs. And for those of you that were at the June board meeting where we approved our substantial increase of about, you know, our insurance costs almost tripled because of everything. So due to that, you're going to see a deficit in the TORT fund for this year as well, just because the revenues are not enough to keep up with that hopefully one year increase. We're hoping this isn't something we're going to see in the future, but for this year, unfortunately it was. So there, there will be a deficit showing in the TORT fund. So that is something we're going to have to look at. In the future, when we do tax levies, we may have to increase some money in the TORT fund to help cover that. So are there any questions on the assumptions? Basically, these are just the basis and what I use in developing the budget. So I like to lay all those out ahead of time. So you know, the basis that I built this budget on. Any questions on that?
Carol, did you say some of the funding is contingent upon the most recent ESER application? Or do we already have this funding from the previous for the number 25?
Well, the, the funding, we have the funding. They've already given us the allocation of how much money we have, but we just had to write the grant and tell them how we're going to spend it. And that's what just was submitted with those Thomas Paine renovation items included. So we're hopeful, we've seen other districts that have, that have been approved for this as well. So we're hopeful it could prove, but until we have that stamp of approval, we don't know for sure.
Do you, do they give any indication as to how long they take for a response on that?
I asked Tanya today. I think the SR two got back pretty quickly. So I'm thinking it won't be too long hopefully. And we should know. They'll submit, sometimes they'll just return it and have a few questions and need us to change a few things, but more than likely it'll get approved in a couple of weeks. Okay. The next thing I wanted to go over was something that I provided at your tables tonight. It was just a one page summary. It looks like this, has a little blue line on the top. I know you received in your packets over the weekend, the detailed budgets. I'm sure you all spent your weekend, holiday weekend looking over all of those lines. But there's about 4,300 lines in all of those pages that you resent this weekend. So what I tried to do is I take that and kind of summarize it for you in this, just to show you what changes were made in both revenues and expenses. So hopefully this will be a little easier, easier to understand. Main decrease, what I, so what I start out on here is the last year's revenues. And then I show the changes to get to this year's revenue budget. And then same for expenses. The largest change in the revenue budget was in real estate taxes. Over the last couple of years, we've kind of had an up and down with our real estate taxes and the county, county clerk's office and the treasurer's office. Because we were not receiving our taxes in a timely basis, those taxes were delayed and kept getting pushed back into the following year. Well, last year we had a catch up, so to speak, where basically last year was the year where everything caught up and hopefully got back to normal. So we had a big revenue in our real estate taxes. And this year I'm dropping that down to be back to normal. So unfortunately, last year was kind of the catch up year and we had a large revenue year, but this year we're back down to normal. So that's why you see that large $5 million decrease. Just because we've been dealing with very abnormal years, the last couple of years as far as our tax receipts. And as I said, the additional tier funding was about 293,000 additional money. And then replacement tax, again, because I was so conservative in how we budgeted last year, I really dropped it down for the FY21 budget, but I bumped it back up. And plus they're, they're estimating an even larger increase. So I'm hopeful that comes, comes to fruition, but right now we are budgeting about 1.3 million dollars more in replacement tax, which really helps us out. Obviously, registration fees are getting back to normal. A lot of, a lot of these adjustments were to get my budget back to pre pandemic levels, so to speak. I mean, we had really dropped things back last year because we were remote most of the year. A lot of families weren't paying registration fees and, and they weren't eating lunch and buying additional items at lunchtime. And all the food is free in Urbana for all of our students. And they just haven't had the opportunity to. We haven't increased our, a lot of meat, we haven't been serving a lot of meals because we were remote. And this year we're hoping that those obviously go up since kids are back in person. So you'll see an increase in meal reimbursements as well. So those are the main changes in revenues. For expenses, obviously the, one of the biggest changes in our budget is obviously salaries and benefits because 80%, 85% of our budget is salaries. So we also had dropped the SRO costs down last year because they did give us credits because of our agreement, they amended the agreement to give us some money back since we weren't in session. But then bumping that back up again. So there's an increase there. The next several items are what we talked about a second ago in the assumptions that were just some of the items that we moved out of the Ed Fund over to ESER so that the grants are picking that up now, about 1.5 million dollars. Now, some of that was existing costs that the district had and some of it was new costs. So these are some of the, some of the things are things that the district has never spent out of our Ed Fund budget in the past, but we're now having to put in ESER so that the district doesn't have to carry those costs. Also, again, because our, hopefully meal services to kids and the number of meals we're storing is going up since kids are back in person. Our increase in our contractual food service costs will go up as well, about $600,000 in estimating. The other item I wanted to point out is added utilities for the Comcast building. We do have the building across the street now that we have to. Thank goodness we have it because we're storing lots of things over there now, lots of furniture and items. So it's definitely being put to use. But we do have utilities on that building. So we had to add for that. And then we're saving on our debt certificates, our 2010 debt certificates that we issued to do some improvements at the high school years ago, to do retrofits for lighting and things. Those are paid off. So I will no longer have to do that transfer. That's going to be a permanent reduction in the budget of about 106,000. So that's kind of a summary of the changes. And then on this, any questions on that before I go to the last page? Yeah, Anne?
Just a quick one. It's great that we can shift so much stuff over to ESER and that that's generating a very small, you know, bit of revenue, but remind us and the viewers again, when those funds run out, how many years do we have on that?
We have until September 24.
Okay, so presumably we're going to try and do that again for subsequent years until that money runs out, right? For the salaries for like our clinical professionals and things like that. And then it'll go back, the money will come, go back to the usual revenue sources for those, you know, for those expenditures. But what do you see us doing with the, the money that we're saving from ESER? Where are we going to put that? And I'm sorry if you've already mentioned this earlier in the summer.
The money that we're saving from ESER is, as you'll see in the next item I'm going over, is helping us to not have a deficit this year. Because if we didn't have that, we would have a deficit.
Okay. That's a simple and good answer. Thank you.
So let me go on. So that's a good segue into the final summary sheet.
Carol, before you go on, I do want, I want to add to what Anne, some of these costs, Anne, are things that after 2024, we won't need. So we probably, hopefully will be post pandemic at that point and we won't need, we have a lot of additional nurses. So that number will, will decrease significantly. The additional clinical professionals will have to make some decisions, maybe hopefully through attrition. You know, as people leave in the next two years, we may not replace those positions because we've added several. Same thing with some of our other COVID costs. We just won't have those costs hopefully after 2024.
Carol, I had a quick question for you before you move on. I'm sorry. I was just curious, could you talk a little bit, I see that there's a decrease in sped reimbursements and then about the increase in the sped tuition. Could you talk about that just for a minute for me?
Sure. The increase in tuition is what we pay to other districts. So we didn't probably increase, yeah, it didn't increase by very much. Because we usually keep that at a pretty high level, about 1.2 million, I think. And it's one of those things that we can anticipate. As Todd can tell you, there's times when we may budget that and we end up spending way over because you never know when a child's going to have to be outplaced. So the sped tuition that we pay out to private facilities, we didn't increase that much. But the increase in sped reimbursement is based on other items, based on the costs that we've spent sometimes in the previous year. Because everything with schools, when we do claims, it's all, the revenue that we're getting this year, a lot of times it's based on expenses and enrollment and things from last year. So it's always kind of a year behind. So a lot of the sped reimbursement we're getting this year is based on costs from last year. Yep. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I'm sorry. I just thought of one more question. And this can be for Kim as well as for you and also for Jennifer maybe. So I know that they weren't taking any, they weren't doing any report cards for the evidence based funding spending, but they were, they were freezing. I mean, they were keeping us at the same level, right? Over COVID, the funding that we were getting pre COVID stayed the same for the year. Am I wrong in remembering that?
Under evidence based funding, you will never lose money.
You'll never lose money.
You never go down. You're always going to get at least what you got the year before, and then the tier money is on top of that. So.
Are they, have they made noise, the state made noise that they're going to start taking tests again and evaluations to see if we get increased funding for next year? Do you anticipate that? Have you heard news about that?
So as far as schools that receive designation, so really we, we've been really fortunate because for schools that were designated, it should have just been three years. And they will get five years of funding. So for example, then we were told that this was going to be there last year. So they'll get next year as well. With the exception of Thomas Paine, because they were designated later than the others. Now that the funds that they receive were each year was a little bit less. So they actually had the same amount last year. So they got more than expected. But then it was incrementally less this year, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that does. I just was seeing it and thinking about it, not in solely in terms of improving our schools, but then how is that going to affect the budget? So when Brenda asked that question, I looked back on that line and went, oh gosh, I forgot to ask. Sorry.
Yeah. Sustainability is really important. And because we didn't have a year, you know, that really gave us the opportunity to do that. More time was given so we could work in that sustainability and, you know, get some more systems in place.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Okay. The final sheet I want to go over is the budget summary, which kind of just brings it at a really high level in total revenues and expenditures by fund. And this, this page always confuses new board members because it's And this, this page always confuses new board members because it's like, why, what, what's the reason for all of these different, different funds that we have? And it's mostly based on the fact that when we levy taxes as a school district, we have to levy for specific purposes, education, transportation, O and M, debt service. All of these different areas, we have to levy a separate tax for, which we do in December of every year. And as those monies come in, the state requires that we account for how we spend those monies, so we have to keep track of them in these individual, kind of like individual checking accounts for every, every levy that we do. The piece that's not showing on this, this, that I will have at the next board meeting when we approve the budget on the twenty-first is the estimated beginning and ending fund balances. So that's kind of the cash on hand that we have to start the year with. This is showing you that for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we are estimating these revenues for the year, these expenditures for the year, and then whether there's a surplus or deficit just for that year. But there's also beginning fund balance and an ending fund balance that we will have as well. We're in the process right now of having our auditors, our auditors are still here this week. I'm hopefully going to be completing their fieldwork this week, so I will have a better idea what those beginning and ending fund balances are by the next board meeting, so I will add those columns when the board approves the final budget and you'll have a better idea of what money we actually have on hand. Those fund balances are important. That's, that's the rainy day fund that we need when there's years that we don't have, when our expenditures exceed our revenues. And if you have too many years of deficit spending, obviously that fund balance goes down. So we'll talk more about that at the next meeting when I present those fund balances. But tonight, this is just a summary of all the revenues and expenditures by fund. Normally, our education fund is our largest fund. That's usually about sixty percent of our expenditures in the Ed Fund. This year, because of the construction at Thomas Paine of the nine, nine-and-a-half million, and then also all of the grant revenues, our grants are up to twenty-five million dollars this year. That's the highest they've ever been because of the ESER funds that we're receiving. And normally our grant funds are about eleven million dollars a year. So that's more than doubled because of the ESER grants. So normally that grant fund should about wash. I mean, the revenues and expenditure should be pretty much equal because the money we get in for the grant, we, we budget to expend that. But for the education fund, you can see we're about twenty-two thousand dollars surplus. That can swing one way or the other very easily just by when we receive our taxes. As I've said in the past, depending on how, how, how the treasurer disperses those taxes when they're received, if we don't get those in the normal way we, we have in the past, I mean, it can really skew the numbers and make the revenues higher or lower by a couple hundred thousand dollars easily, one way or the other, so. Having a balanced budget is a good thing, but we then we have to remember too that we have a lot of items that are in there that are being picked up by the grants that we're going to have to deal with in a couple of years. So that'll be something that we'll be talking about over the year and in the future. O and M is balanced this year, so that's, that's a good thing. We've been putting more additional taxes in our O and M budget. That's something the board gave me the direct directive, I guess, a couple of years ago to start having a way to address the deficit in O and M. So we are putting additional tax revenues in O and M to, because there is an accumulated deficit there and we have to have some years of surplus to, to get out of that. Transportation fund, as I mentioned before, we do have a deficit there, but that is kind of a one-year thing just because last year, we received a normal year of revenues, but our expenses were down. So we actually had a surplus last year. But this year, because of last year's COVID year and having less expenses for transportation, our reimbursements that come in this year that are based on last year's expenses are going to be less. So that's something that'll, that'll even out over the next couple of years and should be back to normal. The other thing I wanted to point out on here, obviously, it, it looks like we have a nine-point-one million dollar deficit in construction in our construction fund, but that is only because the revenues that we received were received when we sold the bonds back in May. So we've already got that money on hand. So even though we are deficit spending for this fiscal year, we do have the money on hand and it's not something that's going to impact us in the future. So that's nothing to worry about. And as I stated, the TORT fund does have a deficit of three-hundred-and-seventeen thousand. And again, that's just because our insurance came in so much higher than what we expected. So we're hoping that's just a one-year, one-year problem, but if not, we'll have to adjust that in the future as well with our tax levying. So that's kind of a summary of where our funds stand. I'll have more information on this at the twenty-first meeting when the board approves, approves the budget. As well as I'm hoping to have some additional analysis on how last year went. Since last year, we did budget things a lot lower and we were very conservative. I think I'll be able to report that the FY twenty-one budget turned out better than what we expected, better than what we budgeted. So that's always a good thing. So our fund balances will hopefully be in better shape because of that going forward. But I'll have more information at the next board meeting for that. So any other questions on the, on the budget tonight?
Yeah, just actually for the record, I, I sent a question to Dr. Ivory Tated and her team this morning about the size of our administrative team and the relative salaries for this district versus other districts around, just to have a sense of whether there were any salary studies done recently that the board could have access to. And I got a response right away that, that that was something that you all would work on and get back to us. So I just wanted to state it for the record and I appreciate the, the quick response from the team.
Sure. Yeah, that's something we'll be able to present in the future. We have access to a lot of information. It's just a matter of taking that and analyzing it and getting it in a, in a format to present to the board. But a lot of databases out there with that information that we just need to pull the information out and get it in a format for the board. Any other questions?
Okay.
Here you are. Thank you very much, Carol.
Thank you.
Now it's time for our public, sorry, for our discussion on the adult education budget. Shauna.
Good evening. For those of you that, can you hear me okay? Okay, great. For those of you that I haven't met, my name's Shauna Shear and I'm the Director of Adult Ed. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present the budget tonight. Some of you might remember that Marcelo Spray usually does this, but he left to go to Rantool Schools. He had a wonderful opportunity that he couldn't pass up, so he left us for Rantool. So you're stuck with me for tonight and probably the foreseeable future. As I go, feel free to jump in with questions and then I'll definitely give you time to ask questions at the end. So for those of you who are new, the majority of our funding or our biggest funding source is the Illinois Community College Board. You have this, you should all have this in the packet. It looks just kind of a one-pager, much more simple than Carol's, Carol's budget. So our main funding source is the Illinois Community College Board and they break their funding up into different sort of pots of money, federal basic, state basic and state performance. This year, this, in the spring, I also wrote for additional money, I wrote a special grant for additional money for the IEL civics funding, which is dedicated to ESL classes and helping our ESL learners get employed and improve their English skills. So we were awarded that funding. The caveat I have for the Illinois Community College Board funding is they have not yet given us our allocations for this year. So they told me that we were awarded funding for the IEL civics money, but they did not tell us how much. I think we wrote it for ninety thousand, so I did a conservative assumption here at seventy. I'm hoping we get more than that, but I won't know until we get our allocations. Additionally, all of the other funding source or the funding amounts there are based on level funding from last year. I'm assuming that we will get somewhat of an increase, at least for a couple of those pots of money. I did give us a decrease for performance. I think last year our performance money, our state performance money was somewhere around a hundred-and-forty-some thousand. I decreased that for this year just because that's based on a very specific formula and with COVID, our performance in terms of our test scores and things like that weren't quite what they'd been in the past. So again, I'm just, I'm just making some conservative assumptions. I'm hoping they'll give us level funding because everybody in the state was having that issue in adult education as we were across K-12 as well, so. I won't know though until they give us our allocations, which hopefully will be soon. So all that is just to say that's a pretty conservative number. I'm hoping it ends up in reality being more than that. And then the, the funding at the, under that, like number, line number two through nine, those are already determined, solid funding amounts. We receive money from RPC. They're the, the mechanism, the, the organization that sort of deals with all the funding for Rioa, which is our workforce innovation grant. That helps us get students employed and allows us to pay student stipends for doing some work experiences in our community or in our program. The TAOP grant, as Carol referred to, that funds the SEA positions in the district, partially funds the SEA positions in the district and also funds part of my teaching staff salaries. For our students who are ESL learners but are too advanced to qualify for ICCB funds, they can pay a fee and access an advanced class. So that is where that money goes and that, we don't, we don't, we only charge enough to cover the cost of the teacher. Small amount for earnings and investments. As you see, we were offered some, I applied for and received some United Way funding for this coming year for our CNA program. For those of you who don't know, we have a certified nursing assistant program for courses a year that students can get certified to be CNAs in the community and many of our CNAs are actually employed now at the district for the testing site and things like that and that has been a really important program for our community. We have a partnership with OSF for that and Clark Lindsay, so our students do their clinicals at both of those sites. And then district funds, that's a little bit different. So in the past, and I think Carol had this in one of her budget assumptions, assumptions, in FY twenty, it used to be that, that we, and Carol, you count me out if I get this wrong because this started way before me. We, meaning adult ed, basically build the district for students that could have been at the high school that came to us instead, under the storefront school sort of umbrella. But Carol and I sort of worked through it and decided that it was cleaner and more transparent to just have the district, we looked at the amount that the district was paying on average every year and took that amount and the district decided to cover the rest of my salary that they weren't covering and Marcelo's grade salary at that time. Because we get grant funding some, somewhat based on the number of students we serve, we weren't comfortable then charging the district money for those students as well, but we still need district support. So we were trying to make it sort of more clean and transparent on where the money was coming from and how we were getting the money. But because Marcelo's is now gone and because I'm not sure where our funding stands, Carol and I have spoken about just using exactly what, the same amount, so it's not in any additional cost to district funds, but using his salary, the funds that the district would normally pay for his salary for, to help out with some other costs at adult ed, some utility costs and supplies and things like that. And then we receive a Secretary of State grant. We've gotten that in the past, pre-COVID. We wrote for it again and received it. And what that does is it's a partnership we have with Salt and White. And we work with them to train some of their employees on math and literacy skills. And they pay salary to their employees to, to attend the class and we pay for the teacher. It's a really nice partnership that has had good outcomes. And so then at the bottom, you can see the projected expenses. Again, if our funding ends up being more than what I anticipate, we will probably hire back a couple of positions that we have lost or that I just didn't rehire for, that people that resigned that I didn't rehire for because I was unsure of our funding status. Everything is there. Does anybody have any questions? If you think of any, feel free to reach out. You all should know where to reach me. I will probably be here when you approve the budget if anything else comes up, or if I do get information about our funding changing in terms of what the allocations are going to be, I'll include those in the approval that you do in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Shauna. Study topic, the third one tonight is our summer facilities update from Randy.
And Randy is not here in person because he, today was a travel day back from the long weekend for he and his family. I believe he is in the Zoom. Is that right, John? Okay.
I am. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
You can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Um, I think you guys all have a copy of what I'm just going to go through. Give me questions, Dan. I'll, I'll be happy to answer them. I'll just hit on everyone we kind of worked on the summer. Did some, we did four rooms of flooring at Martin Luther King. Took us some old nasty carpet, put in some nice tile. Lille, the chillers are, chillers are here. We're waiting on pumps currently. And then we're looking at working October eighth through eleventh, weather permitting, on installing those chillers for Lille. Currently, the one that's up there is, knock on wood, still holding strong, so should be good there. Dr. Preston Williams, we're not able to get the gym flooring people in to take care of that, but they'll be here this winter. Over winter break, they'll probably take care of that. Yankee Ridge and, and a couple of classrooms or offices. We're having problems with the tekdom ceiling, like the dirt on top of it was kind of like sifting through. So we put a seal coat, like a little heavier paint on it. It seems to be working right now. Middle school, we didn't get to replace any interior doors or door frames because of a, there's no, nothing was available. No metal, so that we'll pipe it that up till next summer. The ladders that I wanted to put on the roof to access the different roofs, roof levels. No metal was available for those either. High school, we painted a four staircases. Replaced some, we placed flooring in one science lab. They didn't get to the other one. The flooring materials came in late. But they're, they're planning on doing that. And then the drama room over Christmas break. The elevator modernization is complete. What else we got? Bottle fillers were kind of a tough thing to come across this year since everybody was getting them and putting them in the buildings. We do have a, we just recently got three in maybe, still waiting on a few more. We also got that Delta grant that I applied for. And they just recently awarded us three more that they put in for free. And they're putting those in at the Wiley High School and Middle School. Tyler, that old blacktop repair done, some seal coating and scraping of parking lots, playgrounds, stuff like that. Doing some concrete repair, just with scheduling, weather and stuff, we keep getting bounced around. We don't have a lot to do. We won't end up spending that forty-four thousand dollars now, but with a few repairs we need to get taken care of. Vehicle replacement. Trucks are really hard to come by. Still waiting on them to come in. And we had to only get one instead of two because of cost. Last year we could have got two of them for sixty-five, around sixty-five thousand dollars. And this year it'll be almost forty for one truck. The boardroom roof is repaired. We're doing cleanup in there now. Putting in, replacing some ceiling tile. Some HBC issues. The, just like the ductwork, some lighting. Hopefully, and then we'll do the carpet cleaning. Hopefully that'll all be done. Probably this coming week, if not the beginning of the following week. We installed the, or made a new gravel parking lot for the students. There's maybe the parking that gravel lot. We doubled the size of it and they love it. But they were all really happy that we did that. I think that's it. We did a lot of HBC upgrades. Installed the eye waves this summer, replaced filters. That's what we do every year. That's what we do every year, filters. And a lot, just a lot of miscellaneous work at all the buildings, additional painting. We had the move for central office. That took up a couple of weeks, so. It was brutal. I think that's it. Yeah, if you guys have any questions, feel free to answer.
Hey Randy, I tried to catch all that. You, you're talking about a grant and I heard there were deltas. I was wondering what that was all about. I didn't quite make that out.
Yeah, last year I applied for a, it was by Delta Dental and they had a grant and I applied for each building to get one water bottle filler. And then they also donated however many students were in that building. They also donated that many like water bottles and I think a little toothbrush and some toothpaste came with them as well. Played for that grant last year. We got one for every building and then they had some extras and would know we'd be interested and I just had to apply for it and they awarded it. They said they had three, awarded the three to us, so those should be, we're waiting on them to install. They thought it'd be probably November before they got them in. That every, every building has at least one or two bottle fillers and we're trying to get more in. I'd like to put at least one or two more in every building, high school, middle school, you know, a couple more than that, but.
And it was perfect timing because during the shutdown, we had to close all of our water fountains. And we had a lot of those old bubbler water fountains where the water came up. So yeah, we're really excited to get that grant. We have been approved by CE PhD to turn some of our water fountains back on. But we would prefer to use the bottle fillers wherever we can. So we're hopeful to get more of those, especially at the middle school, high school, because you know, we only have one or two, I think it, are there two at the high school now? Yeah, yeah.
Awesome news. Thanks, Randy.
At least two.
Hi, I have a question. So were the summer projects at the middle school and high school for creating those kind of outdoor concrete areas? You know, with the picnic tables and all that stuff, was that all completed then?
That, that is complete. Yeah, that was part of the, what's that called, Jennifer? Sorry.
Oh yeah, that, that wasn't part of Randy's on him. That was covered out of S or two.
Oh, I thought that was part of this, though.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But they are.
Those are in and complete. We got, we're still waiting on some picnic tables to fill up a little bit more of the courtyard. You guys are over to middle school today. Go to the courtyard and look real quick. Up in there. So there's three of those outdoor classroom, we'll call them, in the courtyards and all three of them have a tent over them currently. And I think Joe says they use them a lot, so it's good.
And also, if you're wondering, I know Randy doesn't have all the costs related to the portable that's here at UMS that was also part of S or two. So there's some electrical work and quite a bit of work that we've had to do on our end to get the portable up and running, but it is being used right now. We received it pretty late. There were a lot of delivery issues, but students are going in there for lunch and some classes. So that's also not part of this because we covered that, those costs are S or two.
Any further questions? All right, all right. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Right now, we do have two executive meetings scheduled for Thursday and potentially one for the following Monday, all related to student discipline, superintendent's report.
Hey, John's pulling that up for me. Oh, I don't need the clicker, John. You can click for me. Oh, it's up there. You can just click from there. So the first item that I just want to discuss, it isn't part of the agenda, so I'm adding it more so here just as an update. We've been looking forward to getting the census data as we've discussed in the spring. And a little bit early summer, September was our goal to start talking about subdistricting. We've been having back and forth conversations with the RPC recently and I don't know what that is. So our, the planners that we need to work with are, have not been available yet and we are working through a, we had a kind of an intergovernmental agreement between the RPC and the district. The last time we did subdistricting work, so we're continuing to work through that. The two planners that we need to work with have been out of town, so they're both wanting to be available here in the next week or two. One of them, Gabe, a lot of you probably know Gabe. Gabe is a a former Prairie student, graduate alumni from the district, so he's been great to work with. So he would be one of the people that we'll be working with. They did provide and we'll put this, Catherine will be working on the board update, so we'll make sure that this link is a live link. That shows some of the data, data map information, but I've been told by the RPC planners that the information there is not exactly complete yet. So we really can't start having the conversation, but I did want to include the map. They shared this map with me. And a link that people can go in and start looking at the demographic data that is available right now. So we'll continue to work with them. Hopefully, we'll be bringing that back very soon to a board level discussion. So I know September was kind of our date or our kind of our timeline and unfortunately, we're not going to meet that, at least not for this meeting, maybe not for the next meeting. But I did want to let everyone know that that is in progress. Next is we've made some changes to the COVID data dashboard. We've had a lot of conversations back and forth. With a couple of our parents, some of our administrators, board members. We've also talked, Angie's had some conversations as our liaison with CE PhD and therefore we are making some changes in how we're reporting that information. So I am not going to speak to that. Angie and John are going to. I've been busy doing so many other things. They have kind of taken that on as.
Sure. Actually, I've been working on contact tracing all the time, currently on text with the district nurse. And so we updated our data dashboard after a long conversation and we just wanted to take extra precautions since we are in person as opposed to last year. And so if you, John, if you could put that back up there that was up there for, thanks. There we go. And so all of the reported cases of COVID nineteen in our district are shared on the dashboard. That is a change from how we did that last year and we are, we, not we are, we did go back to August first. And so all staff and students are listed. And we just want to make note that an individual testing positive or being required to quarantine does not necessarily indicate they were exposed at school. So right now you're getting all of the numbers. We are not going to tease that out unless we, unless we get to a point where we have to, just based on how much time this is taking. And so at a different, at a specific building, if parents have questions, we've been very responsive via email. Or a phone call, most of the time it's email. But John, I asked John to do some math for us to see, you know, kind of percentage wise, out of all, from August first. Out of all of the students who have tested positive. I think it's point one five percent of our student population has been an active case in our district so far in the past, you know, four weeks. And for staff, it's actually really close. I thought it was point one six, maybe?
I think it was point one one five.
Okay, well, you don't have to. I know you're not thinking, like, you know. And so believe John over me, he's like the guy. And so for us to be well under, I mean, well under a half a percent, I mean, it's, it's not even a quarter of a percent of positivity rate for both staffs and students when you take into account the total population of students. If you'll notice that we have several students that have been quarantined, that were quarantined last week. Under the guidance of Dr. Ivory Tatum, since she has the ability to make these decisions. Which is fantastic because we wanted to be able to prevent the spread. And we had a couple of classes at Dr. Williams that we chose to quarantine on Friday. And that was, and so today, before both of those classes came back into the building. Each one of those kids had to test before they could come back into their class and we're going to do the same thing tomorrow, just to make sure that that has not spread among the classroom. And so sometimes you have students that have tested positive and we don't find out because they tested out in the community. We'll find out from the public health department. We will get people quarantined and contact traced as soon as possible. It has happened and it, and it likely will continue to happen unfortunately, that we will have, you know, some positive students that were, that may be in the building. And they, the family knows that they're positive. And so we are stressing to families how important it is to keep us in the loop so that we can keep others safe. And so that's why that number is so high from last week. But all the protocols are being followed and it's, we're, I'm really proud of the data and proud of what our building administrators are doing to keep staff and students safe. And so we've had a few staff members test positive for COVID. This, in this past four weeks and every single staff member was vaccinated, which is a little scary, but also just reminds us all that this this variant, the COVID nineteen and, or the Delta variant of COVID nineteen is takes no mercy on us, right? And so we're continuing to mask when we're in all of our spaces. I think that's, John, go ahead.
And I would add on those numbers. So the, that positivity rate, that's kind of out of everybody, any cases that we know of inside the district or from outside testing, from our own surveillance testing, inside student testing today, I think we're at I think it was point six four percent, which is still an amazing number, but that's everybody, people who were a hundred percent asymptomatic. So that's a really good number compared to the county number, point six four percent.
Right. And we have people kind of all over the spectrum on whether or not, you know. I answered a parent email today asking why we're testing all these healthy students and and the, the purpose of that is to prevent the spread in our schools and it's, and it's all optional. Students and families get to make the decision as to whether or not they are tested and I'm really proud that we work in a district where we are making staff testing so convenient. Some districts are doing the opposite and we really want to be able to provide that access to our staff and to our families. The family members are able to come, you know, before school, after school, during school. And so it's really been incredible of the, the hours that people are putting in to keep our kids safe.
And I would add also, of the staff and students that we found, pretty much all of the students we found early in the day and those were students that we, that didn't know that they're infected and we were able to pull those from the student body before they got to lunch. I believe every single one of them we got before lunch and it's just been an amazing effort and so much thanks to Dr. Ivory Tatum for all the work that she's done to kind of bolster this and put it together.
Yeah.
So she's been right there on the front lines, talking to students and processing tests.
And that's what I was going to say. So John and I are the people behind the scenes entering this data. John's definitely in the schools too, but the first thing that Dr. Ivory Tatum does when she goes into the school is find out the lunch schedule. So that we're able to get people tested before they take off that mask to eat something. So it really eliminates the close contacts. She said that she talked to a teacher today where there was one positive case just from the surveillance, kid was asymptomatic. And they were able to, to get that student at ten AM. They hadn't had snack, they hadn't been out at recess and she really questioned them. The teacher, just to make sure that we're absolutely sure that nobody had been exposed, so.
Thanks, guys. That was more than I expected, but I think very important for the public to hear, so thanks. And testing, so they've already talked a lot about testing and we are doing a lot of testing. If you go to the CE PhD website and see a nice little spike in their testing results, that is Urbana School District accounting for a lot of that testing. We're entering that information into the Redcap system. I, I am in, as the, I guess our CLIA lab director is, is one of my additional duties. So I'm also in communication with IDPH people, as is John, about how we're reporting that data and that data gets reported in the county as well as for the state. So we have a lot of testing happening in our schools, but a lot of people are taking advantage of our drive-through. Today I visited the we're short-staffed, as I mentioned in my updates, so I have been on the front lines, kind of helping them until we can get some more people hired. So we had over fifty cars come through the Yankee Ridge drive-through today after school, which is phenomenal for our students and our staff to be able to drive through. And it, it does help us isolate those positives right away, so they're not walking into the building the next day and with kids and teachers. So next, we have a vaccine clinic tomorrow. We're really hoping, many of our students twelve and older will take advantage of this as a way to incentivize. I've talked about this before. I've been emailing the students, so we are going to be raffling off very soon to laptops and these are not Chromebooks, students. I keep getting people saying, is this a Chromebook? It is a real laptop. So we raffled off one earlier and luckily, one of our UHS seniors won that for something else. And so it's been really nice to be able to give students an additional computer for their home. For their use or for their family's use. So we're hoping to get more of our students. We are not going to turn away any staff members, of course, who are currently not vaccinated, who want to come and get vaccinated, so they don't have to test as often. But again, September eighth, four to six at UMS. And last but not least, we had UHS open house last week. It was a great turnout. These are just a few of the pictures from that night. So families were able to see some of our clubs, meet the departments. There was a gathering in the gym where they got to talk with Principal Nance a little bit before they broke off. So it was a well-attended event. We appreciate everybody coming out. And that is it.
I was just curious if we had any updates on percentages. I know you had sent out information.
Oh, for vaccinated staff?
On staff and students.
Sure. Students, no, because we are working through, since we closed registration, it's been a little harder for families to upload their vaccination cards. John and I are just problem solving that right before the board meeting. We have had a influx of people, of student vaccination cards coming in, so I don't have an update on that number unfortunately, but for staff. District-wide, we are about eighty-eight percent vaccinated, which is huge. That number is well above the county vaccination rate. That includes TAs, lunchroom supervisors, secretary, basically anyone who is a staff member in our district. It does not include our outside contracting people, but anyone who is employed by us is part of that eighty-seven percent. For our certified staff, we're almost at ninety-one. We're at about ninety-point-six percent, which is also another phenomenal number. And that is anyone who's certified, so that would include administrators, classroom teachers, specialists, anyone who is a licensed staff member. So we are doing a great job with vaccination. We do have staff that are participating. As I shared last week, the governor's executive order was, was recently extended. I haven't shared that, but that just happened. A lot of districts were not prepared, as Angie mentioned, to not only test students, but to test their staff that are not vaccinated. We, of course, planned ahead, so we, we have been testing our unvaccinated staff. So the governor extended that executive order to, I believe, like September nineteenth, to give districts a little more time to put a testing program in place. Luckily, we don't have to do that. We have, have a higher threshold of testing that we expect. We've been expecting our staff members because we've made it so convenient and they don't have to go other places to test. We've asked them to test twice a week instead of the mandated once a week. So again, the Delta variant, you know, is, is, is not caring as much if you're vaccinated. So we have asked our vaccinated staff who feel like they're close contacts, who feel like they've been exposed at any point to come through and get tested as well, so. So we've talked to CE PhD about that and of course, as soon as they make it available to us, we definitely will.
Board reports? I've got one quick one. I am still working on committee assignments. I've, kind of have a rough draft of it, but I haven't had an opportunity to talk to all six of you yet. So I'm going to be reaching out to all the rest of you shortly and by our next meeting, we will have those committee assignments handed out. All six of you yet, so I'm going to be reaching out to all the rest of you shortly and by our next meeting, we will have those committee assignments handed out. If that's it, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favors?
Aye.
Those opposed? That's it. Good night, everybody.